Bob, is it your knee that's bothering you?
I had hip resurfus and I did well. I mean, two weeks ago, I was scraping. I mean, the drive goes like this. And I go, oh.
I'd like to call to order the March 9th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. County Secretary, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Ms. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Meredith is absent. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great. First item is to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries next. Approval of the minutes from the February 24th meeting.
Support.
Support.
Oh, moved to support.
I'll move it if you support it.
I'm sorry.
I'm happy you're adopting a Mr. Flynn, you know, plan for the meeting, but, sorry, I do add, maybe not in the proper order, a motion and a support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Today, we have two items of significance on the agenda, the first being site plan number 20-06, special land use number two. Bill Morton for Leo Group, Leo Brown, Leo Brown Group, senior facility. It's a, since it's a public hearing, I'll have the secretary, or ask the secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant: Bill Morton, Leo Brown Group, Leo Brown's Senior Facility, 802 East 86th Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46240. Proposed use: Geriatric Psychiatric Hospital Senior Facility. Location: Vacant Parcel, Parcel Number 23-07-36-100-026, south of 21 Mile Road, east side of Shainer. Site Plan Number 20-06, SLU-2. CIDW number 23-07-36-100-026. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, March 9th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 5270 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments may be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published on February 22nd, 2020, in the Macomb Daily. There were 26 property owners and four applicants were notified by first-class mail on February 14th, 2020.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. And could you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate?
Under the current zoning, it's 02. There's professional office building, real estate offices, banks, credit unions. This type of use requires a special land use, and that's what we're here for tonight is for that hearing.
Great, thank you. Did anyone have any questions for the attorney? Hearing none. Did we receive any correspondence on this request?
No, we did not, Ms. Flynn.
Great. Okay, the format for the hearing will be as follows. The petitioner representative will come up and ask, state what they're requesting and their reasons for it. I'll then turn it back to the board for the commissioners to ask any questions. I'll then open it up to the public to, for comments or questions, and then finally allow the petitioner to make their concluding remarks. At this point, petitioners ready?
My name is Clark Andrews. I'm an attorney with O'Reilly-Ransfield in Sterling Heights, and our firm represents the Leo Brown Group. I have two people with me tonight. Bill Morton works for the Leo Brown Group. He's the Vice President of Development. And Jim Butler works for the PEA Incorporated, the engineers on the project, and he's going to handle the site plan aspects of it. I'm going to try to do the special land use. Do you combine them, or do you want us to take those two aspects separately, or?
Uh, however you want to do it.
Okay, all right. Our client wishes to build a small 23-bed geriatric psychiatric hospital on a 2.3-acre parcel of property located on the east side of Shainer, just south of the intersection of 21 Mile and Shainer. As Bob Kirk has indicated, the property is zoned O2 office, service office district, which allows uses similar to this as a special land use, with approval of the Planning Commission subject to satisfaction of certain requirements. I've discussed this matter with your planner, Julia Misich, and she indicated that, from her perspective, that this was considered most similar to a nursing home, and that it was going to be reviewed under those standards.
I'll let her tell us what she thinks.
Okay, that's fine. We are here seeking the site plan approval and special land use approval. Mr. Butler is going to handle the site plan aspects of it, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to him to handle that, and then I'll come back to the special land use aspects.
Great, great, great.
Oh, I also want to say, I distributed a plan tonight, a revised plan, that showed that parking had been relocated from the front yard setback area. There was a comment from AEW indicating that there, some of the parking was too close to Shainer Road, so Mr. Butler was good enough to go back to the drawing board and make some revisions to it to...
Yeah, we, we, the board all had it in advance of the meeting. When you're done speaking, when this item, just make sure you sign in with a name and address on the, so.
Good enough. Good evening. Jim Butler, Professional Engineering Associates. Address is 2430 Rochester Court, Suite 100, Troy, Michigan, 48083. As Mr. engineers has pointed out, this is a psychiatric facility, senior psychiatric facility. It's on about 2.3 acres property. The frontage along Shainer, is the frontage along Shainer Road. I want to go over here if I may. Is there a mic?
Yeah.
Or can I wander about it?
No.
Nope. You pick me up, huh?
That should work. There you go.
There we go. Is that good? Okay. I'm assuming the camera's got to keep, I gotta keep it there for the camera.
Yeah, exactly.
This is a view of the building. It's a single-story, 15,000, approximately 15,000 square foot building.
Maybe not.
As I said, the site is generally located along Shainer Road. There's an existing Trilogy Healthcare Village along there. Access to the site, there are two existing curb cuts along this drive here, this being Shainer. There's access here. So no, there'll be no direct access from Shainer Road. Parking will be located on the north side and on the south side of the building, approximately 50 parking spaces we have out for the site. I know there's some comments, and I think your planner will get into them, about locations of the dumpster and related to the generator and the transformer here. We have no objection in relocating that and moving that. That'll be fine. I did provide a sketch, and you have seen that. You know, we unfortunately encroached into this area, so this afternoon, I was able to put together a sketch, and it provides for 50 parking spaces, and I think it does what we all want to do. And there are some variances that we'll have to seek, but that won't be one of the variances that we will seek.
Okay.
We have gone through the comments. I think we can address pretty much all of those.
Well, go ahead if, yeah, in advance of it, if you want to address them, go ahead.
Address the variances that are...
Yeah.
Okay. The variances that are being required, will be required for this, is a screening requirement from the, between the R6 zoning to the east of the site. The second one is the minimum distance from the structure to the property line. It's supposed to be 75 feet. And then the use of the hospital shall be developed in, on sites more than 10 acres, and the site's only 2.3. So those are the three variances.
Okay.
With respect to the special approval land use requirements, as you are aware, there are requirements relating to specific uses, as well as some general discretionary standards. And I believe that we can meet all of those, except for the acreage requirement, and we may be, as far as the special land use requirements, and we are going to, we are on the April 2nd agenda for the Zoning Board of Appeals for that. The specific standards for special land uses for nursing home-like uses are that the zoning has to be in one of, a variety of different uses, one of which, I mean districts, one of which is the O2 district. We satisfy that requirement. The second specific SLU requirement is, has to do with the proximity of the site to a major or secondary thoroughfare of at least 86 feet. Existing or proposed, this proposed facility is right, is on Shainer Road. There's a, there's a, a shared access with the Trilogy property to the south, that in order to get access into this, and as many municipalities encourage shared access into complexes like this, instead of having additional curb cuts, because that causes more traffic congestion, I think that that is going to work in this instance. Shainer is certainly a thoroughfare that has 86 feet or more of right-of-way. It varies...
And you wouldn't get those curb cuts approved by M.D. So...
Pardon?
You wouldn't, or the Department of Roads wouldn't approve those curb cuts anyway, so.
Third requirement is, is if, if it's being reviewed as against the nursing home facility, is it has to be on a five-acre site, and we don't have five acres, we have 2.3 acres. It's, it's surrounded by a complex that, that has medically related uses. We think it's a highly complimentary thing, but we're going to have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that. There's also a requirement that there is a, that there has to be a minimum lot area of 1,000 square feet per bed. We more than satisfy that. The site is 100,087 square feet, and there's 23 beds, which computes to 4,351 square feet per bed, which far exceeds that minimum 1,000 square foot. The next requirement is that the, the building can't exceed 35 feet in height. This is a one-story building, and according to the plans, the highest spot is 17 feet 4 inches, so that's within that requirement. And the final requirement has to do with licensing, and we will have licensing in accordance with all of the requirements of the state of Michigan. And then there's the eight standard special land use requirements, which I'm sure you're very familiar with. The first one has to do with being harmonious with the neighborhood, and there's a bank to the immediate north of the Huntington Bank, and then the rest that is, surrounds it, is either a vacant site that is just south of the driveway, that is owned by the Trilogy Medical Related Group, and the, all of the other remaining development that is there, that's part of that complex called the Shelby Crossing Health Complex, is senior housing and other healthcare-related, so it, it's a highly compatible situation with respect to that. We believe that a, a small geriatric psychiatric hospital is compatible with and complimentary to these uses. I practice law in Sterling Heights and do a fair amount of elder-related planning things, and, and from my knowledge of that, there's a lot of senior-assisted living facilities, but not very many places that provide geriatric psychiatric help to patients, and, and I live in Shelby Township, and, and I think that's, that it's going to meet a critical need within the community. The second general discretionary standard is that it has to, there has to be good traffic and pedestrian circulation on the site, and I believe that this, when, when the Trilogy site was laid out, it was, it contemplated that there would be something medically related out toward Shainer, because as Mr. Butler has indicated, there's already two curb cuts into the site, so I think it's not going to adversely affect traffic congestion in that area. There's not a lot of traffic generated by this use to start with, and Mr. Morton indicated to me that, that the amount of traffic that they get from, 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 say, medical professionals and stuff like that is not significantly different than what you would get from the assisted living facilities and so forth that are already, that are already there. The, uh, the third special land use requirement is that the proposed operation shouldn't create any nuisance for neighbors due to dust, noise, fumes, vibrations, smoke, or lights. And with all of those things, with the exception of lights, we don't expect there's going to be any impact whatsoever, and the lighting that will be on that site will be in compliant, compliant with the Shelby Township requirements, that, that as far as the shielding of lights and the downward orientation, so as it won't create any problem for neighboring sites. The site is a 15,000-square-foot building that is compatible with these neighboring buildings and uses, and it's a quiet use, and we don't expect there's going to be any issues with that. The fourth general discretionary standard has to do with the proposed building and the site structure.
Yeah, Ms. Andrews, I...
The operation will not interfere with the development of neighboring properties. The only one of those parcels that's not yet developed is the one that's south of the, of the, of the access thing, and we believe that all of the other uses that are there, which are already developed, that those are compatible with that, with this use, and that our use is compatible with theirs. The fifth special approval land use is, has to do with economic compatibility with neighboring uses, and we think that this is going to be a complimentary use. As I've indicated before, I think that there's a lot of senior housing and, and, and senior assisted living in Shelby Township, and it's continuing to develop where I look. But, but there's, there's not, as far as I know, any facilities that concentrate on geriatric care and assistance for elderly people, and we think that...
Ms. Andrews, we've received your, you know, so you're...
Okay. All right. If you have any questions at all about satisfaction, I'd be happy to attend to those.
We'll, we'll ask questions before we make a decision.
Okay.
Recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fair. To the board, any questions for the petitioner?
We have security on-site, like a dedicated security guard?
No, no, no. Now you got to name and address. You got to sign in.
Bill Morton, Leo Brown Group, Indianapolis, Indiana, 802 East 86th Street. Depending on the show...
Now you need to talk to the microphone.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We're all about rules here.
Depends on the operational, you know, occupancies and that type of thing. It is a secured building 24/7, though. Multiple doorways, very much like a memory care facility would be, but to the next level. So we would be in compliance with all the requirements with the state, so. Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dallo.
Why is it named hospital? What is that?
Great question. For licensure purposes, it's identified as a hospital. In other markets, we just opened one in Lansing, Michigan. It's right next to a Trilogy nursing home. We actually refer to that as a behavioral pavilion. It's a little, it's an easier word to discuss when talking about referring patients, but that's the, the state's term, technically.
How did you get licensed in Lansing without calling it a hospital?
We, it's still a hospital, just in terms of selling and marketing, the facility, we refer to it as a pavilion.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
So it won't likely say hospital on the building?
No, no. The, the, the name we used in Lansing was actually Brightwell Behavioral Health, and for this facility, it's to be determined, but we just did get the certificate of need approval through the state just this week.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Turner.
Question, I think, from Mr. Miller. One of the comments from our planner was about the use of brick on the north, south, and west sides. You have no problem increasing, because I looked at the elevation. The east looks nice, but the other two look, so would you, you have no problem increasing amount of brick?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we want to comply with the neighborhood, and we want to be a good neighbor.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Sherman, one more thing that I want to, in, in the plans, on, I believe, A100 indicate first floor. Is there any, and I, I heard them repeating first floor on one story. Is there a basement? Is there a, is going to be future second floor?
No, no.
Because that's, and the way it's identified as a first floor, that I mean, there's something else.
Yeah, no, no, it'd be single floor, and per the certificate of need, there has to be a line of sight from the, from the one central nurses station, so it would be one floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And per our process, they'd have to come back and request it, and alter, you know, change, so. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the only public hearing. The Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation before acting. This time, anyone from the public is free to ask any questions, offer a comment. And if I could get your name and address, and then when you're done speaking, if you could sign in. Thanks.
Mike Ferranti, 13443 Ludwin. I'm slightly kitty-corner behind it.
Okay.
Southwest, maybe. We talked a lot about the neighborhood in front of it, but not much about the neighborhood behind it, and how it was going to affect that. Also, our property values or whatever, I'm not sure what kind of, what's between me and the site.
Okay, I tell you what, if, maybe, if, want to go point out, why don't you locate his house versus what you've proposed? Are you okay with, or what?
Well, that's across the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought it was on the corner. I apologize.
No worries. Yep, yeah, that would be a little bit, you know, putting a 14,000-square-foot, but on that little lot would been, there'd be, there'd be more people complaining, so, but that's good. At least you read your mail, that's good. At least, you know. All right, would anyone else wish to comment on this? Seeing none, I will ask the planner for her comments.
Chairman Moffett, I think this use largely is consistent with the existing site, as, as the applicants have stated. I have a few comments. Number one, the cross-access agreement and maintenance agreement will be required for the site. Like Mr. Butler said, there is a generator in the trash disposal just to the north of the site. If that could be relocated, maybe, you know, towards the east a little bit, because I don't want, you know, going down Shainer to be visible, you know, those, those units to be visible. So I think if we move that towards the east more, it'd probably be a little bit aesthetically pleasing. The, some of the variances, the first variance for moderate screening is just a technical variance. I don't think, you know, largely, this probably doesn't apply so much to the site. However, it's still in ordinance, and we have to, we have to overcome that. Same thing with the variance for number B, the minimum distance of 75 feet from the property line. Also, as Mr. Turner stated, with the use of brick and the west elevation, north and south, being that they're visible, largely visible going up and down Shainer, I'd like those to be all, look just like the front, as the east elevation. And the one other thing is from the fire department, is provide an approved turnaround at the dead, at the parking. So I know there were some modifications, but I think it, we'll have to modify it to meet the fire department standards.
Any concluding comments? If somebody come up, acknowledge that they're accepting of the planner's comments?
I, I think we're okay, Jim. I mean, based on, you know, the brick, the trash, you know, fire department standards, yeah, I think acceptable by our...
All right. Okay, good. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use; compatibility, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use; protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We, this evening, our options are to recommend approval, to disapprove the request, or to table it, to evaluate the request further. This time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I'll move to recommend approval and forward to the Township Board Special Land Use Application Number 20-06, SLU-2. Bill Morton for Leo Brown Group, proposing a geriatric psychiatric hospital for the following reasons. The proposed use of this site for a geriatric psychiatric hospital is consistent with the development pattern in that area. The development of this site will not interfere or discourage the development of abutting property, and the submission of a revised site plan is required incorporating applicable review comments from township departments and engineer.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Moore. Mr. Chairman.
I want to add one, one, I'll add one thing to that motion, Mr. Chairman. A positive recommendation to the ZBA for the variances on the site as well.
Okay, thank you. Do you concur?
Yes.
Secondor? Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck. It's nice, we, it took a lot to get those other two buildings, a lot of process to get them done. It's really nice that that actually has, I mean, your use fits in perfectly.
I think it'll be complimentary.
That's good. Did you add, and again, I warned you guys to sign in.
Thank you.
All bets are off.
I know.
Okay, next item, under old business site plan number 19-13, William Lang. And this is a modification on a, on that Irish, KJ's Irish pub. Oh, he'll be open. Go ahead, you can talk. Sign in after.
Okay. Good evening. My, my name is Bob Lynn, and I'm with Urban Land Consultants. I'm here this evening to point out, we needed a little bit of a change to the building for Billy's Bar. We needed another barrier-free ingress on the south side of the building, so.
This was something that was requested, I'm gonna turn to the planner, by our building department, the Township's building department?
Uh, no. No, it was brought to our attention by Mr. Lynn.
Oh, okay. I got it wrong.
At any rate, we were, we needed to redo the sidewalk on the south side of the building, which is over here.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna talk, you need the mic. Or do it from there, I don't care.
At any rate, the original plan had a couple of steps in there, and it would be better for ingress and egress to have a ramp, and they put a half wall up, so people would not get off of the ramp and be a little safer. So that was the reason for the modification to the plan. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's what I'm here for tonight, ask for your reapproval.
Thank you. To the planner, your comments?
I don't have any comments, Mr. Moffett. I think this makes sense, and that half wall will provide some safety features to the patrons exiting that south end of the building.
Cool. From the board, any comments? Tell you what, I commend your, your, your client, because, you know, he's, he's, he's worked long and hard, and we've, he's been, he's been before this body multiple times to get that in good shape, and I appreciate, I appreciate that he's, you know...
Been in the business for a while, so he's got some changes.
Yeah, no, no, he's, he's, he's doing it the right way from, as far as I can tell, so. Any other, any questions from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, is there any changes or modification inside the bar itself?
No.
Okay, because I just seen the notice in the plan indicate proposed bar, so I thought they change in the bar area.
No. The seating and everything is the same, it's just that the egress on that other side...
Got it.
The, the bar and all, if you've been there, it's got a couple of steps on that side of the bar, and it's better to not have people have to walk out, and then forget there's a step there.
Thank you. Yeah, given, given, given his line of work, you know, it's tough enough on a good day.
Yep.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve the site plan modification for site plan number 19-13 for William Lang, KJ's Irish Pub, 5491 Auburn Road.
Support.
Moved by Moore, support by Dalu. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Chair of the chest. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Planning directors' report?
I don't have anything, Chairman.
Cool. Mr. Dalu?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Among Shelby Township's greatest assets are the world-class recreational opportunities it provides to residents. Within its borders, the township offers more than 1,100 acres in township parks, sports fields, playgrounds, and trails. Shelby Township provides an escape for nature lovers with many of its parks. Home to more than 100 species of native birds and animals, including nesting American bald eagles, and more than 80 species of trees, shrubs, wildflowers. It's hard not to fall for the township's beauty. Along with its parks and recreation facilities and programs, Shelby Township is home to Cherry Creek Golf Club, one of the finest public golf and banquet destinations in Michigan. The township also shares the 4,000-acre Stony Creek Metro Park, which is home to the beautiful and tranquil 500-acre Stony Creek Lake. Shelby Township also hosts part of the Macomb Orchard Trail, a 24-mile hike and bike path that connects 180 miles of trails across southeastern Michigan. Shelby Township's parks and access to the Clinton River are the heart of what makes the township a better place to play. Add the township's hundreds of miles of hiking and biking trails, and it's easy to recognize Shelby Township's access and opportunity for recreation are like no other places in the region. Among these trails is the westernmost portion of the Macomb Orchard Trail, which spans from the township's western border and ends in downtown Richmond. There are also trails that connect the township's 800-acre Riverbends Park to Lake St. Clair. Shelby Township is also home to a key connection of the Macomb County 70-mile trail loop and the planned Ironbell Bike Trail, which will ultimately connect the city of Detroit to the state of Wisconsin. Shelby Township's trails offer residents and visitors a scenic mix of up-north hikes and great asphalt bike paths. All of these amenities ensure that no matter what your outdoor interests might be, there is a place in Shelby Township for you and your family. A better place.